Welcome everyone to the March 13th workshop. And we're going to get right on with it. We have Mrs. Clark. Would you like to come on down and talk to us a little bit about the North Street Traffic Study?
Yes. We've got to wait just quickly to bring back a couple of copies.
Perfect. Very good. Do you want me to go around you? I can go around you. You want to wait a minute or you want to go first?
I'm always first.
All right, you're first and there's no doubt in my mind. So to give kind of an update before Mrs. Clark sits down, we all recognize about the amount of speeding that's done on this street right out here. I mean, there's been many times that I've looked out here and it's been like a flash going through North Street. And I think Mrs. Clark's going to give us a little history about what she's seen. And we did a, the State Highway did a review on North Street. And then I think they kind of gave up after two days. There was enough information that basically states how much, how many speeders are on North Street as we are right now today. And of course, we're so close to a school zone and a lot of folks that live on North Street. But Mrs. Clark, I'm going to, I'm going to give the floor to you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that I don't have the breadth in information for everyone here.
You're good.
Okay, all right. But you can, I hope, I'm going to read this. I hope you can follow along. I've had a stroke and I don't write well and my daughter didn't come home this weekend to print anything for me. So, good afternoon.
Well, listen, I think you're looking fantastic. I got to tell you that.
Thank you. Our administrator of the town office, Mr. George, you might even have paid attention.
Please listen.
I'm Bob Paulson, the commissioner's attorney, and I'm the superintendent of the chief of police. Thank you for having me come in today to speak to you. But as I look in the back room here, I think I'm like the little redhead, if you remember, the little redhead and the wheat and the flower limit. As I, I live on, it's just saying working.
Yeah, you can pull it a little closer to you if you want.
I live at 506 North Street. If you all are familiar with North Street. There are only 12 houses on each side, which makes like 24 coming in town and over the bridge. The cars fly up and down. Cars fly up and down. And I took it upon myself, I wasn't going to say all of this because you have to the Department of Motor Vehicles in Baltimore, and they were kind enough to come up and place cables across the highway to give the first people in the town and the police department a good tool to work on themselves to do something about this speed. If this were a nursing project, 50 years of retired nurse, I would know where to start, but I can't do anything because I'm no longer allowed to stand out front and yell like I've been doing for years. Okay, in addition to the big letter that you have, I'll only be a couple of three minutes. Thank you for allowing me to take your workshop to discuss results of the traffic survey on North Street conducted by the town, by the mental department. Concern and the letter sent to Mr. Bowler, would you have a copy of, of the survey and a packet Michelle had pulled, she would give to you? The persons driving these vehicles on North Street travel at speeds above posted limit and the posted speed control monitor that the police department set out in front of my house. I am hopeful that the results of this survey will be beneficial tool in addressing this speed issue. There is no respect for the law to handle this problem. So that's all I have to say because my information here tells for cars are going 35, 40, 50 mile an hour. And you know, and were you all surprised how many cars travel on North Street in a 24 hour? What do you think, Bob?
I can tell you, looking at the, what the consultant, over 3,000 cars travel within that period. And what I'm seeing is, is close to 50% are not paying attention to the speeding sign.
And as I spoke to you this morning downtown, if there's cars coming in, out of town going 50 mile an hour, do we got cars on 45 miles an hour passing each other on that bridge?
I was, I was shocked to see that there was cars rolling in excess of 60 miles an hour. And then in some cases, there was, let me see, on one date, we had several cars exceeding 70 miles an hour, which I hope it wasn't our Elton Police Department. I hope it was not the Emergency Management Department, but they were flying and that's uncalled for.
And for those of you that, I've lived on that street for 63 years. I moved there when I was 26 years old. And I'm, oh, the only person that came to support me is my new neighbor, Alicia Lewis, and anyone in Elton who went to Elton High School. And what do you think? You probably knew her dad was Bill Lewis, who was the town band director. Right, so that's my neighbor. Thank you. I don't know if she has any comments or not.
Well, Mrs. Clark, before you go, I'd like to say that I'm in full support of you, always have been. I have brought up the speed limit on North Street several times. It's a real problem, especially because we have a middle school there. And you're right, they fly up and down that road. You know, I pull out of my neighborhood two, three times a day. And when I pull out, I look to the left toward middle school, no one there. I pull out, somebody's right on me.
If I wanted to back my car out of my carport, go up the alley, come out Kentmere, I don't turn left on Kentmere. I should ride straight first to the Bullhorn.
You're right, they fly up and down that road.
And then I said three minutes, another thing, there's children, schoolchildren. And when the weather gets better, the kids, you know those step walls and they walk down the step wall, they push each other, they horseplay. And very soon, track season's going to be starting. The kids run over that bridge, over that bridge running. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. And I will tell you that thank you for taking the initiative to get the State Highway involved on this. And I can tell you, we will absolutely take some action. There was some discussion with the chief whether or not we're going to work with our own officers to do it, or if we're going to move for it with an enforcement camera.
I think, like I said, there, there were documented times that you could just punch.
Yep. It's only going to take once or twice to get somebody. And they'll slow down.
I can remember when our administrator or the town police, they used to pull them on Grand Kentmere, give them a ticket, pull them over, you know, it was fun to watch.
Who's thinking about going back in that field? They were.
I thought I ran a thousand tickets on that.
It was fun to watch. And now I can't sit on the porch because it's too noisy, but I enjoyed, enjoyed that radar gun when they give them a ticket.
We will commit. I think the board feels the same way all the way around.
Yeah, I love that, too. I used to stand out there and yell out, but I couldn't forbid.
Well, you yelled at me a couple of times.
I'm otherwise known as the cat lady in Elton. I feed all the kittens, I feed a lot of kittens.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. Sidney. Sidney Ojai, a what-to-be-told?
Oh.
Sidney Ojai.
I feel you, Sidney.
Tell us, Sidney, tell us.
I can say Sidney Massimian, I mean, Sidney, give us an update on the MS4 permit update, if you would.
Is this like, are you doing a slide thing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, you're all right. You're with me, Sidney. And you should be able to share your screen.
I see where a neighbor, I see the next bit that beat the 76ers.
They should have, as they should.
Like with the mouth.
Do you see one of the options to share your screen now?
Yes.
Okay, do you share screen? Yes, hold on. Give me a quick sec. About. So how about if we take this and try to put it below and then middle. And then, so let's take, so if you can grab it.
Yeah, you still pretty good.
Okay, we'll get it.
There you go. Sidney, don't be nervous in front of us.
Absolutely.
Not Sidney, heaven's stuff, that's me. Not Sidney.
We can see it up there, just.
Yeah, we don't, district. Oh, that's really, now it's going to be bad. That's really bad.
We got it up here in front of us also.
If you don't touch the screen, it might fade out, but it's a light.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hey, Sidney.
My name is Sidney Ojo Faye.
How do you say it, man?
OJ. Fatini.
Fatini. OJ Fatini? OJ Fatini?
OJ Fatini.
OJ Fatini.
Wait a minute, where is? I gotta look at it. I might be wrong.
All right. Maybe you're wrong.
So today I will be doing a status update on Elton's MS4 management program. It has been a while since I've presented anything like this, maybe a few years, so this is all in good faith. As you know, I said before, I'm Sidney Ojai. I've been the stormwater program manager since 2006, 2007. When I started, I was given a proposal from KCI from 2004, and they were putting a proposal together to contract running the town's stormwater management program. So I was given this proposal, I was given the coroner's office, and told this is what you got to do. And I've been doing it ever since. So what I am responsible for is the town's MS4 phase to permit. MS4, I'll say that a lot, or I may not, it stands for municipal separate sewer system, stormwater sewer system. Basically, any storm drain, any facility that's in the town of Elton, that's supposed to be built in town of Elton falls within this permit. And in order for the town to be in compliance with this permit, there are six permit requirements that the town has to meet each year and report it annually as of the last permit, this newest permit that we have, it's biannually. And since I've started, this is the second permit term that I've been responsible for. Since I've been stormwater manager, there's been several things that MBE has introduced to municipalities within the state. First one would be 2010 stormwater management ordinance that Michelle Henson was a great help in getting that orchestrated. And what that did, to make it short, it was geared toward the designing phase of stormwater management in municipalities. MBE wanted developers to develop more environmentally friendly stormwater management structures and facilities for their projects, which terms like ESD, which is environment site design, and maximum instead practical, practi- practical, practicable? You got it, I'm saying. Practicable, there it is. And this was for engineers to explain why their environmentally sound design was the best they could do for that particular project. The next thing was the watershed implementation plan, which started in 2010, that went to 2018. And I believe Gene Manner was the chairperson for Cecil County during that time. And to make a long story short, and to cut that in half, the Chesapeake Bay was in bad shape. The EPA asked the states along the Chesapeake Bay to bring up this grade. And I believe those states was Maryland, Pennsylvania, Delaware, New Jersey, and New York. So what Maryland did, they raised their hand, they stood up in front of the class, said we're going to get our municipalities to do better than the other states. So they asked all municipalities in the state of Maryland in 2010, you have to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from your municipality area. We're not going to tell you how much it is, we're not going to give you money, we're not going to tell you how to do it, but you have four phases to get it done. That was the whip. Moving on from that was the impervious acre reduction, which is in the new permit, the second term permit that I'm responsible for, which the town is responsible for removing 20% of the impervious area within the town. And for the town of Elton, that is 194 acres of impervious surface. So we're talking about concrete, asphalt, roof drain, rooftops, anything that's not permeable to rainwater or precipitation. The town is responsible for removing 194 acres of that by doing certain amount of activities. Some of those activities are retrofitting ponds, rebuilding stormwater management ponds, building rain gardens like the Long How Street, building stormwater structures in places where there weren't before, requiring developers to build additional stormwater facilities for their projects. This is all included in this reduction, impervious acre reduction. If I'm losing anybody, please let me know. And the most important part of the program for me would be MBE's response to what the town of Elton is doing in regards to compliance with the permit. Since I've been responsible for the town's permit, there's never been a year where the town has not been in compliance. So hopefully we have received our response letter for last year, but I did submit their response for 2022, and I think you all have a copy of that. And pretty much this end of town is in compliance with what we're doing with each of the six permit requirements. What I've noticed, being in correspondence with MBE from, for so long, they made certain changes within the last few years. Previously, I say five or maybe 10 years ago, I was able, most municipalities are not isolated here, we would tell the state, we're working on certain projects, we're working on certain things, and they would be satisfied with that answer. Recently, and this is not unique to the town of Elton, they've been asking, they've invested more time in wanting to know in-depth answers about what the town is actually doing. They, they want to know information about follow-up inspections. They want to know what we're doing as far as finding illicit discharge, finding illicit connections in town. They want to know what we're doing.
And what do you mean by that, Sidney? Like people discharging illegally or?
Yes.
Okay.
So like maybe they have their dishwasher or wash machine going into the roadway. There's a business letting their grease trap go right into a catch basin or something like that. They want to know we're finding that out, they want to know how we're finding that out, what was the process we used to find that out? That's something in my last, I guess, how many years I've been doing it, they never did that before. They also want to know more information on the funding that we're putting toward each of the six program measures. So that's new as well. And these are the six control measures that I'm talking about. The first one is public education and outreach. Since I last spoke about this, I don't think we did as many events that we do now, pretty much ingrained into Elton's school district, dealing with their career day activities. Then, at D W, we do careers on wheels every week for a certain amount of schools where we go and we talk. Science events that they have, STEM events that they have, I'm always invited to. So if we rewind back to 15 years ago, I wasn't allowed in the school. So now I'm actually put on schedules and invited to come to a lot of events that they have. Another thing we have is the resident guy, Shady Hudson, she does a great job putting stormwater management information in there. Town's website also has stormwater information, so we're in compliance there. The second part is public participation and involvement. I take part in Cecil County's Way In event that they have every year. I have a table out there and I invite people to sign up for a black replacement activity within the town of Elton. Moving along, illicit discharge, investigate any illicit connection that we have. We have sewer inspection team at Public Works that inspects our sewers, so that's a part of the illicit discharge. We have our engineers that do our mapping. We have a proposal to have our mapping updated. It hasn't been updated since 2010, so we're working on that. And I as well do illicit discharge training to Public Works staff. Number four is destruction sites, stormwater runoff. Since I've started, maybe 40, 50, 60 pre-construction meetings I've sat in, I've told developers and contractors and superintendents what they have to do as far as keeping sediment and debris out of our storm drains. We review site plans at DPW and we conduct site visits. Five is post-construction.
Sidney, can I?
Sure.
Have you ever required a developer to put additional stormwater management above what our regulations require?
No. Currently, the town does not have, the town's never had delegation of erosion and sediment control. That's what construction sites use. So what we do, we defer to the state. So we'll tell them, hey, you can't do this, you need to do that. But MBE or their representatives oversees anything we say.
Okay.
You have to remember that developers have to have an approved erosion sediment control plan.
Right.
The Cecil soil approves and our engineer reviews it.
Right.
So that goes into prevent particular particulars from going into the storm drains and operating.
And Sidney, to go back to number four, the slide previously, and you know, or number three, you know, it's talking about the discharge. Now, we just went through something that could help you, as we just went through, we're changing all the meters in a lot of households. You might be able to get with our, the rest of the department, they might be able to tell you maybe some, and I don't want to say that I want to point the finger at some of those houses that might be taking their, their rainwater and putting it through our storm system, and that's a no-no? Or help me, tell me what the no-no is.
A no-no would be their water service or their wastewater going to the storm drain.
The wastewater going to the storm drain. Well, hopefully we don't have any.
Water service, that's called water.
Hopefully we don't have those.
Chlorinated water going into the storm drain is an illicit discharge.
And if that is happening, it's probably older homes that were before the codes were in place and it was just, that's the way it was. So we might want to think about how we can do a volunteer, have a volunteer that information to us and figure out how we can work. Because that, to do that, doesn't sound like it'd be that difficult to do inside a house, would it?
No.
It would just be to put it into their septic system.
If they have an apology, they will without it, they're not going to, they're basically talking to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have post-construction stormwater management, where I do the triennial annual inspections on ponds that are lived in town. Some of the ponds that you may see is, if you haven't been to the big Elton Mall, there's a pond going in there by PFC 279, there's two ponds there alongside Elton Lodge Hotel, and there's a pond next to the McDonald's there. Those are some examples of ponds that I have to tell the business owners to maintain. The town maintains 30 stormwater managed ponds, which you've all given that information before, and I've contacted Cecil County, and they own one pond. They own one pond, but their Public Works Department maintains 150. And 150 is only on county-owned property. So there's no residential pond that they take care of or anything like we do with town of Elton. And there's 154, I'm going to put that in quotation marks because we always finding something out. There's 154 privately, as of right now, today, privately maintaining stormwater managed ponds that I have to inspect triennially. And number six is pollution prevention, good housekeeping, which is basically making sure we keep our facilities clean, chemicals that we use, washing our vehicles, we have to make sure we do it in the area on town property that does not allow impurities to get to the storm system.
Sidney, I saw some work that was being done next to the Starbucks at Seasons. And after that work was done, of course, I see there's a stormwater management pond there, and I mean, it looks like to me they did a pretty nice job of cleaning out their stormwater management pond and their drainage. Is that something that we normally inspect, or did we even know that was air?
The pond, the small pond there?
Yeah.
Before that big drain, yes, that belongs to.
And who's that big drain belong to?
That I believe it belongs to the state. I don't have any information on that.
Okay. You would have never known it was air.
No. No, it was covered.
Yeah, it was.
Usually it's along the waters of the state, Gene Manners and Ralph Lewis know anything about waters of the state. There's a storm drain like that.
State Highway Regulations Act.
Yes. There's a drain like that along Food Line and I think there's a liquor store there. Between there, there's an area that's considered waters of the state. So I would see that, that would be us.
Nice.
There's stormwater pond maintenance, well, there was discussions about that, what the town of Elton does. I can speak from my behalf, maybe in a brand or something, more they'd like to say. We do mowing of our ponds, we clean the invagments, we do the outlet areas, we do that during regular growing season and during the winter. We do our advanced maintenance, which is repairing riprap or putting stone back, re-gradating channels, basic fencing, and removing sediment if it's needed.
So just for me to understand a little bit better about a stormwater management pond, and you've got some help here that might be able to chime in too. A stormwater management pond should not have any type of debris in it, or should it? It shouldn't have any trees in it?
Unless it's specified on the site plans, there's a landscaping plan that comes with it.
Okay.
Usually it will detail which specific spot and what type of tree it is that belongs there. Usually, it will detail which specific spot and what type of tree it is that belongs there.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And what's coming up for, I guess after this meeting, is there's a new permit, guessing, or this permit might be extended that we're in right now. That will begin in 2025, that will go all the way up until 2030. And with this new permit, there will be an increase in the impervious acres that the town has to, I guess, provide for. So it will be 10% more than the 194 acres that we already have to reduce. And by the time 2030, MBE will be looking for all the municipalities within the state of Maryland to have some sort of restoration activity completed. So we'll have to do something, some physical work to meet this reduction goal.
Can you give us some suggestions on what you think we should be looking forward to doing?
Well, we had to submit that back in 2019 when the permits started. So we already have four ponds, four of the larger ponds that we discussed that we will modify, make larger to accommodate for some more of the water quality. We have some septic sewer connections that we have in line to, you know, connect to the public water system. So that would help us meet our goals. And from the information that I have and the information we talked to James Taylor, if he's on, if he's here, he can chime in if he'd like, on that. We superseded the numbers that MBE required for us to do. So we're in very good shape to meet that goal in 2030.
Very good. There's a, of course, I'll say selfishly, I know that there's a, the stormwater drain off of, I would almost say it's not, it might be Mitchell Street or the, I'm trying to think of the road behind my house.
Boys' Alley.
Well, you got Boys' Alley, what's this road there?
Mitchell Street.
It's Mitchell Street, right? So you've got Mitchell Street. That stormwater goes right into the woods.
Yes.
Right there at, behind mine, it's not my woods, I think it belongs to the Lynch family. But then it goes across my property, but there's no rhyme or reason behind that. I think it'd be, is that an area that should have like a stormwater pond or something to capture that before it goes in or is it okay?
I mean, there are several areas in town that are very similar, like Monwood Manor, the cul-de-sacs, I'm reading Carl Ponder, but it just goes right out into the creek. Being that water quality wasn't a priority when they were built.
Mm-hmm.
You just need to get it out of it. Get it from the river.
So, I mean, is that like a target area that would make sense for us at some point?
It would.
So it would help the quality of the water going back into the bay, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. It would count towards our impervious acreage if we were to do a project back there. But that was all along the way, just getting back there.
Well, and it's all private property too. So I mean, that's another, that's another huge challenge. But just the way that it, to me, it just makes no sense. It just drops right into that little wooded area and then it comes right on across. Someone put a storm drain in, I know it's not marked, but it was there before I lived there. But I'd like to do something. Lou, can you give me a permit?
Sure, he's right there tomorrow, take care of him.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Sydney?
I just, you sent us pictures of all the ponds. I didn't realize there were several. And quite frankly, I don't know what I'm looking at, you know? I can't tell if that pond's in good shape or not in good shape. So based on all this, where do we stand as far as? I'm sure you have a list of maybe ones that need more attention, some are in great shape, right?
Yes, as, well, currently, there's a few, I'd say less than, I'm not specifically thinking you guys, maybe four or five, make that, do that really need heavier maintenance?
To get them in compliance?
Yeah, knowing them in compliance, not just basically removing trees and getting closer trash.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's basically getting rid of the trees and removing the trash and debris. And if things all, all the stars align and we can manage them during the course, kind of maintain them during the course of the spring and summer, maybe next fall, we can start doing more detailed work as far as channels and making sure outfalls stabilize and.
Well, as long as you're not running out of time as far as our impervious.
No, well, I report to MBE every October.
Okay.
The annual reports are due October 31st. So most of the time when I report to MBE, I report in good faith that we're going to maintain any and all, any and all the facilities before the next commitment.
And then do you work out a plan with Dan on what you need done that particular season?
Yes.
This is what we have to address now?
Yes, so typically, maybe September, October, talks with DPW start about what we need to do as far as winter maintenance. Dan, myself, and Landscaping Brian, we'll meet and we'll talk about what we need to do as far as what ponds are in extreme conditions, what ponds can kind of be left alone, any major work that may require a different department to help with. We usually typically do that in October and November, December, January during that time. I'm talking from stormwater management, maybe they know something different. That's when they typically handle those issues.
Yeah, that makes sense because the grass cutting's done, right? So then you jump in and you're able to?
We typically somewhere about January or, you know, we start, they, pretty much after the grass is done, our final cut's usually about the first week in November when we're done with the grass. They, after that, they go right into helping out with the leaf cleanup. The leaf, you know, by that point in time, the leaves are heavy as far as the cleanup. So we run several different trucks to keep up with that. So that, between that and they do all the decorating and found trees and all that, same thing. So it's usually about, you know, January really that we get started with that. January and January, February, and then, you know, really this year, you know, probably about April, we'll start cutting grass again.
Is that enough time? I mean, is that, is that, is that a good plan? I don't know. That's how it works?
Yeah, as far as the overall maintenance, we really, you know, some of the stuff needs to be done all year round in order to keep up with it, based on the amount of ponds that we have.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Do you, do you have enough people to do this?
To, you know, right now, I have five people that do, I think it's 188.64 acres we handle weekly. And between the weather and that kind of thing, you know, just, so basically, what we do with the ponds during the year is we cut and trim everything that we can. But as far as the, you know, more in depth maintenance, like removal of trees and that, that kind of thing, there's, yeah, during the cutting season, there's not the time with five people to do that. It's a lot of acres that we cover, you know, on a weekly basis. Yeah, retention ponds is like 50.31 acres in itself of just retention ponds of cutting. And that's just the regular, you know, we've cut everything that we can cut, but, you know.
So we've kind of fallen short on manpower, basically.
To be able to do that, yeah.
To do what we have to do. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Sydney?
Sydney, at the very beginning of your spiel, you talked about the education. Cecil County Public Schools, you have really no relation with, but now they invite you to most of their meetings. So with the students of CCPS and those students who are STEM students, what expectations do they have of you when you are invited?
Um, that's a good question. If it's beyond first or second grade, they already know who I am. They've seen me during the careers on wheels, they've seen me during Career Day, or they've seen me, I do mentoring at, I guess, Gilford Manor. So they've seen me several times before we do an activity. So they're expecting to see more of stormwater management. They're kind of looking for me to do my thing, I guess, with them.
Have you ever gone to the technical school, school of technology?
No, no. Mostly, it's, I think, we all went to, not we all, Louis and Gene and Dan and myself. We went to Elkton High School one year to speak about something. I haven't really managed to make way into the middle schools. I don't know, maybe this year I'll try or next year, next semester, I'll try to do something with middle school. But it's been mostly elementary schools that I've had the most success, you know, as far as events and.
So if I were a secondary and I would ask you what is stormwater, what definition would you give me?
Water that falls from the sky.
All right, all right, that's good. Then, so I would ask you what is management? If we put these two words together, what kind of response would you give me then?
Well, I would, well, what I would do is I would say imagine, you know, if we didn't have stormwater management, you all would be going to school in the boat.
Okay.
That's kind of, and we talk about snorkel in the law in town and stuff like that. So I kind of make it kind of friendly for them.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Any other questions for Sid? Sid, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sid. And once you take that off, I think there was someone who was raising her hand and we'll find out here in a second.
Yes, Sydney?
Sure.
It's Robert Johnson, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you for speaking with us today. I'm a new community member. I just moved my family about six months ago. I'm currently active duty military, I'm stationed in Georgia. Had a quick question as I'm trying to figure out Elkton as a city in Cecil County. Does the flooding of Elk River in town affect this program, your program, and the MS4 permit?
That's a good question. If you're referring to, I guess, the major flooding that most of us have seen, the Delaware Avenue flooding, the Howard Street flooding, not necessarily. My responsibility more or less falls on residential and the town-owned stormwater infrastructure. I believe the state is responsible for, if anybody knows a different answer, or anybody is responsible for.
The MS4 program is a regulatory program that allows us to manage water that can be regulated. Floodwater from the Big Elk Creek and things of that nature are so catastrophic, they go beyond what can be regulated by the town or the state. So that, to answer your question, it doesn't really affect the MS4 permit.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sid. Thanks, Sydney. Okay, next up, we've got an overview. Come on down, Jason and the team, if you want to bring the team or have them in the back. Infomark Water and Infrastructure Services. How's Jason doing? Didn't recognize you with the full beard there.
I hear you.
So I guess kind of give us an overview of where we're at today.
Okay, well, no plans are currently in progress.
Nice.
And happy to report that we did qualify for the Bay Restoration Fund grant for last year. We met all the qualifications for the total nitrogen impostors. I know it was a point before that we didn't make, but we've recovered. So we do qualify for that. We're fully staffed with, well, they have one opening for a maintenance position. Other than that, we're fully staffed. Have a couple of projects going on at both the water and the wastewater plant. Water plant. We have the UV upgrade. That's been going well till recently. We had a problem with some corrosion in one of the UV units. And we've got that sent back to Trojan, who's going to do some figuring out what happened. We're not quite sure where the corrosion came from, I guess, but.
It's the corrosivity of the water.
It's just the corrosivity of the water. But we've got an engineer looking at redoing that. So somehow, they're going to fix, so it won't happen again. All right, that's beyond my understanding of how they're going to do that. But I can get an update for you of that later. We have a UV upgrade going on at the wastewater plant, or at least a study. The current UV system we have at the wastewater plant is a Cowon system. Cowon was bought by Denora. And the Cowon system we have at the wastewater plant is becoming obsolete. So we have a study going on with Trojan and KCI to get us a price for an updated ultraviolet disinfection unit. We either have to do that or buy a brand-new Cowon unit. So Cowon, in my opinion, in Murray's opinion, that's not that great of a system. We've struggled with it for seven years. So Trojan's really the industry standard in what facilities use. So we'd like to get a price for that.
Yeah, Jason, I mean, interrupting, you might want to inform the board, the UV disinfection at the wastewater treatment plant, what stage of treatment is that?
That is the very end of the stage of treatment before it's discharged into the creek. So it basically gets rid of all viruses. It doesn't actually kill them, but it sterilizes them, keeps them from being able to reproduce. So that takes the place of the old way of using chlorine and dechlorination. It's a lot safer, a lot more hard and friendly. But it's an essential part of the process. We've been doing some beautification at the water plant and then we did the whole outside, put the new sign, painted the buildings inside now, the lighting. We've been doing that at the wastewater plant as well. What else we got? We have.
How's it stepping?
Well, we're 16 out of 17. We have one opening right now.
I mean, you're, you're going to have to step on weekends now.
Oh, yeah, we keep it simple, this man. So we are having difficulty with our sludge dryer, the Fenton sludge dryer. We've had an inspection, company AIT out of Texas, which is basically proprietary. From Fenton is now out of business, but this AIT is doing all their legacy work. We had him come in and inspect the dryer last week. It's nothing that can't be fixed, but he's getting us a price on some parts that need to be replaced. And it's currently not turning, he can't figure out why. He's got to come back and take it apart further. He's trying to figure out what's holding up. He said he's never seen it before or anything like it, but.
You might want to explain what the dryer does.
So the sludge dryer.
Press the, you know, your waste and then.
So all of our wasted sludge that we have from the wastewater. It gets belt pressed, which it basically runs through a press. Chemicals is added to it, squeezes out the water, turns it to like a cake. Then that cake is transferred over to the sludge dryer, which hooks it at 90% solids or above, pelletizes it. And that is given to a local farmer here in Elkton, Horizon Sun. Jared Logan, as we give that to them. So they can use it for, it's a Class A sludge and.
It's especially permitted for that.
It's permitted especially for that. And they can use it for hay field. So it's going back to the community, just so.
What would you normally do with it?
Oh, we have to pay to get rid of it or some places could sell it.
I'm saying, do some places buy it?
Some places do.
Wouldn't Mr. Logan have to buy that?
No, not currently, we're not charging him.
No, I know we're not.
But he would if he was, if he wanted to go somewhere else, he could probably get it from other places free. I mean, it depends. Not a lot of places sell it anymore, like composting's on the way out in Maryland too. It's a lot, to be honest with you, I think a lot of places are going to some of these environmental firms that just transport it out of state and then.
How much, how much would you transport to him a year or would he take?
Last year, close to 700 ton a year.
He could use that much?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We used to give it to a local farmer on Eastern Shore while he was a local. Well, he wasn't local, he was a farmer on the Eastern Shore. But Dan, some of the people from DPW put me in contact with Jared, who's a lot closer, he's a Cecil County resident.
And he comes and gets it.
He comes and gets it. So therefore, it's also beneficial to us as a town that we don't have to store it on-site anymore.
Yeah. So this fix that we need, is that something, is that a cost that we incur?
Yes.
And so when you get the report on what's wrong with it, what failed, will we get that report?
Yes, I'll share it.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah. This equipment's, well, 20 years old and it needs to be inspected about every five to seven years and updated. But, yeah, it's costly. But I've done a cost analysis of what the charge to the town would be if we just hired an environmental company to come pick up the liquid. And I think we're still doing better using this dryer, to be honest, in my opinion. And paying someone to transport it out. They basically would do the same thing, just off-site and then sell it. What else we got? I just reapply for the permit for the wastewater plant and the industrial swimming permit. I sent that in the Department of Environment. We have... I mean, that's the big item issues.
I would have mentioned clarifier number one.
The clarifier, the clarifier.
Eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, yeah, the gearbox or clarifier number, was it number one? It's come to crack in it. And this is, we have two clarifiers. Basically what happens there is it allows the water to separate from the sludge. And then that supernaturally clear water off of this clarifier goes to our sand filters, which is part of the enhanced nitrogen removal. And then it goes to the UV. So basically it's like a clarification of the wastewater. So it has a big arm on the bottom that turns and a skimmer on top that turns. But this gearbox is what the motor drives to turn all this equipment. Both of these clarifiers run congruently, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can't fix it. You can't really this quick. They go and work together for 17 years. This gearbox, we discovered a crack in it. So we got a price from a vendor, DSI, to replace it. And once we get that replaced, what I'd like to do is, so it's usually this kind of equipment, once one of them starts to go, they're put in at the same time. So I'd like to get a price on repairing the one that we have. So when the next one fails, we can replace it with that and have it on-site. But I'll get a price and seek the approval first. It's just a good idea to have.
One of the things the board has to understand is any capital cost over 5,000, I believe, that has to go through me, approval. And then Jason sends me quotes and everything and then I send back the approval.
What's the name of it? We take it, we go to it. Yeah, that's the, I mean, that's the biggest idea or the biggest things that are going on right now.
Jason, do you think we have to do anything about these P faucets? Are you guys getting any information other than what we're gaining that we need to start treating them any differently? It's a study.
There's a study going on.
Okay.
So until we know what the parameters or what it is, it's kind of hard there. I mean, they can make them super low, then we can probably have to treat from the sampling that we've done. Or they could be a both, we'll be sampling and then we'd be okay. I mean, we're basically waiting in the urge until MBE gives us... KCI is currently doing some program to help, but... Yeah, so there's still, there's still study going on. Until we know what the parameters, it's kind of hard to make a decision on what we need to do. We need to wait and see what they come up with first and then make a decision to their, in my opinion.
Very good. Anyone have any question for Jason and the team? John, go ahead.
Where do we stand with our industrial user permits and that whole process?
As far as the renewal?
Yes, well, the renewal, how are testing samples coming? But first of all, how about the renewal of the pounds?
I haven't seen it lately. We did some sampling with Quadis today and they'd be...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Our Virginia and I can give you an update after the meeting. She and I have started making sure everybody's in line. So I can give you an update after the meeting.
Let me finish my train of thought. I'm sorry, I didn't...
Sorry.
No, on the sludge. If Mr. Logan didn't take the sludge, would you be responsible for getting rid of it or us?
I believe you would be.
It's our responsibility?
Yeah, but I have, that fellow that I used on Eastern Shore, he's a pretty big farmer. I mean, I have a background.
I was just wondering about the cost of that.
Yeah, I mean, if we didn't have these farmers that take it, it would be a significant cost.
To you or us?
Us, to you.
To us, okay, thank you. That's good to know. Thank you.
But I don't foresee any problems getting rid of it because the farmers love it. It's nutrient-rich. I know we used to give some away to members of the town for their gardens, but that kind of fell, I don't think many people want to put that in their name.
No.
No.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
It's mostly good for hand, it's good for hand.
Awesome, thank you.
They get it in the wood pellets. You can use it for your...
Thank you, guys. Hey, Dan, I wanted to mention to you that the Marina Park will be, start to be used next Wednesday for the pickleball. So we might want to get that timer set to where it'll be on a little, until nine o'clock, I guess.
We've also got a, we've also, I'm looking into getting additional lights. We got the PO, the electricians researching them.
Perfect. And there's, I noticed that there is part in the back there, part of the fencing is kind of like pushed in. I don't know, maybe we can take a look at that and get it tied back or put it in place.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I spoke to, just to keep the board in the loop on a few different things. You know, we've had a key person out for over, I guess, close to four months now, right? Is that, how long it's been?
Since February. Since February? I think at the beginning, sorry, I'm sorry. I think it was February or was it January, Steve?
I think that's been January.
Okay.
Middle of January is...
I didn't realize that it was part of that.
So I think the board's aware of that. And I spoke to, I had a conversation with Steve this morning with Diane. I sent Lou, I sent you an email on a couple of things. And I know we're working forward to getting this audit done. And I just wanted to stress that we will not be the last piece of the puzzle that's needed to finish this. So whatever we have to do, we just get it done. And Diane sent me, Diana sent me a little note a little while ago and she feels that she can pull or extract a lot of that to help along with the case here. So I think she can help. And then once we get it over to Clifton Larson, that's going to be the challenge, how long it's going to take with them. But I think I can do what I can do to push that along a little bit.
We need some assistance from St. Halle firm, which we're not doing the audit, which it can't be a firm doing the audit and doing the handling.
Okay.
We'll have to pull that in capacity. But if we exhaust it, what we can do or what we can find and probably we will have a whole third party in.
Very good. Let's just make sure it gets done. And I think the whole board feels that way to get that done.
Okay, I was going to say, can you explain to me what we're...
Yeah, so the norm for the town audit is for it to be done. Normally the range is September. Quite frankly, we're always around December and it's kind of a norm that everyone asks for an extension. So we're normally tracking around December. This year, there's been multiple things that I found out that has happened. One is we've changed the computer system kind of in midstream, even though it really doesn't have anything to do with this because I think the old paradigm...
It was 1830, that is part of this facility.
It's all still there. You know, I'm not looking at, I just want solutions. So the solution is, is we got to get this done. It'll be the latest it's ever been during my time here. But we're going to do everything we can do to get this thing done far above the dates that we were given the other day. So that's, that's our goal. That's our goal here. And I think that we can do it. I think that everything I'm hearing, I think that we can put this thing together and get it done in a timely fashion. We need to, the bad part about it is, you know, it's tax time and all these folks are accounts. And you've just got to, got to push the wheel a little bit to get the right one turning at the right time. And that'll be my job. So once we get all this moving, then I'll squeak the wheel, I guess. Put a little grease on it.
Yeah, I know St. George has provided Cliff Larson help with her ability that they may have, but they're talking to each other directly.
I'm waiting for the call back from Sherry. And she's going to give us an updated list of what we need because some of the stuff is there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we got, there's more of it done than not done. So it's, that was all good news. The mayor's lucky charm race is this Sunday. I hope everyone can count it there and run a 3.1 miles. Charlie in?
I'll see. I happened to see some ladies at Parks Direct at Walmart yesterday buying vegetables. We do, we do rates.
Very good. It's going to, it's going to be a nice event the day after St. Patrick's Day.
Is that again?
It is 10 a.m. But if you want to come there and register on-site, you probably need to be there by right around nine o'clock. At nine, at 9:30 at the Patriots' Glen.
Okay.
Yep, same place it was last year.
What time's it end?
How long does it take you to run 3.1 miles?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It'll be under an hour.
The band goes till four, Rob, so it'll be good.
It doesn't start around 5 a.m.
Yeah, it'll be under an hour. I think my time, I beat Earl Pinear's time, I beat Lou George's time from... Lou had the record for years for our age group. And I beat his record last year.
No fair. He's moved into a different age group.
Earl, are you going to be there?
Yeah, but I can't run because my arm.
That's okay.
Because of your arm?
Yeah, I can't keep on doing it.
Very good.
That's part of the rhythm.
And I'm looking forward to, and we'll mention it again next week, but we're looking forward to the fishing rodeo. I know Rob's put together his old team and they got everything up and running. So Dan, I think just one thing I'd like to, if you could give us like some assistance from the hatchery department to make sure that we can get those fish maybe there a week before. I don't know if he can pull any magic or not. Is that what we're kind of requesting?
Yeah, at least a week before. I think the last year they were put in maybe three days before. I believe the fish were still in shock and we did not have the catches that we had in previous years. I really believe that's why, so we can back that up a little bit. It'd be great.
I'll inquire.
And put a couple 10-pound flounders in there, stuffed with crab eaters.
Kind of marlin.
That would be great for all of us. That is, we're going to have a closed meeting after this meeting. We're going to meet with, I think, Andy and Steve and Michelle and Louis will be there. John, do you have everything signed up? There's been, it was an email going back and forth about, you were in court yesterday, but we needed your, there's some comments that were sent to you. Maybe just give the thumbs up or thumbs down.
The one is, it's a three-page small plate thing that needs to be completed on-site on my letterhead station. I'm like the fastest type in the world and you got a bunch of people that have taken turns and clues and it's just, I may have to, I'll have it done separately.
Okay, perfect. Actually, I don't even think they needed to type. They just wanted to know if you were okay with the comments.
I'd like to give that to them. I do want to do that. I don't think they want it already typed on my letterhead.
Okay, perfect.
So...
Perfect. Fine. Anyone else? Gene, what do you have today? Charles? Earl, Rob?
Ned, kind of quiet.
Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting has anything to say or any comments about today's workshop? Anyone in the audience have anything to say today about the town workshop? All right, well, this meeting is, well, we're going to ask for a closed meeting to meet with personnel. Do we have a motion? And a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we will not reconvene.